Everyone ready now to start the local council meeting? 7pm, 7.30, first item on legal, second item on the agenda. All of these for absence.
Thanks for the great uh fact you went um and that's the day I'm happy to see that my meeting today.
Item three declarations of interest, anybody?
Um just in the, I know obviously, um personal um interest level may have to be disclosed, but in the spirit of openness, uh I would like to declare a personal interest in items nine B, Christmas lights, also items thirteen, fourteen and twenty.
Okay.
Same goes for myself, yeah.
Item number four, first of all this participation please, which will strip for ten minutes so we can get to. Yeah, and just items on the agenda, please. Yes, please.
I'm down.
Yes, please.
I'm here on behalf of the Summer Carnival, if anybody has any questions before we get to that.
Okay, thank you. Yes, please.
It's not on the agenda, but I saw on Breckland Council that they're saying that we can recycle the handling aid, you know, the walking sticks etcetera via the recycling pens, like it's not a term. So quite a long way for people to go. Can you arrange that we can be dropped off here in November, the issues?
Sure we could, yeah.
If you could publicise.
Yeah, sure we could, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Yes, please.
Um I know it's on the agenda, we have uh an item about the car parks. My understanding of the way the local government, the devolution is going, the the Norfolk and Suffolk parties are not meeting until uh to decide on the mayor, the lower cascades down. The government itself has put it back, they're not meeting till November. So I cannot understand why, and then they're going to be buying into smaller councils. I cannot see why there's any need to rush into buying car parks or anything like that. And the councils will still be there afterwards when the devolution is, but they'll be in it, they won't be Breckland or Norfolk things like that, they'll probably be three instead of six. But they will still have the same assets, the same car parks, the same everything else. So why there's any need whatsoever to buy one? There's no need, and especially not yet.
We certainly don't rush into anything, but.
Well, it seems it's getting pushed by Breckland, so I think we need to just establish there is no real need whatsoever to do anything with that as yet.
I believe we've just had a, not so long back, we just, the council resolved to um enter into a, an arrangement whereby um they would take on a lease with an option to purchase the car parks, the council's already made that decision.
Yes, but why, why have they got to do that? There is no need. They will still be owned by the new councils. It's not Breckland, it's not this. So why are we wasting money buying a car park that was just the same, but just but under a different, different council?
I, I think the answer to the reason is um to have it in local control rather than a new unitary council who could then charge and uh charge the tuition fees for car parks, which I don't think residents should like, whereas if it's in um town council control, then there would be there for uh the option uh to have our own tariffs.
I think there needs a lot of looking into before this is anything decision is made and it's not pushed through by members of Breckland Council.
I don't think it would be, but um I think we've got to trust that this council will um make a decision, a very informed decision once the council.
May I just make one clarification? Uh just a clarification, Breckland Council have not made an offer to the town council to buy those car parks. The ta- the Breckland Council have not ever expressed a wish or a desire to sell those car parks. It was the town council that made that request, not a Breckland initiative.
So it's not a public in, public interest, you make that request, that was just the town council deciding.
Because they thought that would be in the interest of people out there.
Yes, sir.
Sorry, not on the, on the agenda, but it was something that came out tonight, that was on the playgrounds.
Can we, can we just stick to the agenda, please, sorry?
Well, I was concerned about these pins being spread all around the playgrounds, if there was any more updates on it.
Can you send me an email, please?
I, yeah.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes, please.
There is an item on the agenda about, uh it's torn behind, closed doors after this, about the splash pad. I cannot understand why that splash pad in this town is going to be viable. I've done a lot of research and they cost between four hundred and six hundred thousand pounds. And that's a lot, a lot of money for this, for something that'll be open maximum six weeks a year, I would think, with school holidays. And what I can see, and then you have to maintain it, and looking at things, because you have to have the water done and recirculated and cleansed and things like that, and estimate costs for another council, it's twenty thousand a year. Just to, to, to maintain it. What an utter waste of money for a few days.
I'd be absolutely controversial, I'd say I couldn't agree with you more. Personally, personally. Yes, please.
Is it only tonight that the agenda items, um participation, just the agenda items, was that?
That's always, thanks for sure.
Because we've never, ever invited by before, just wanted to invite tonight. Is that in there? Thanks, thank you.
Anybody else want to, yes, please.
Peter Neill, um at the former, two, sorry, at two previous meetings, I spoke about the former mayor's gallery and is it going up, when is it going up? Tonight I see it's up, thank you.
Well, Peter.
Okay, that's all, we'll move on. Uh item five, minutes of last meeting, now seven to July to twenty twenty five, acceptance and approval. Anybody any comments on them? No? Have a proposal, that's a dog, second there? Castle middle rock, always a favour?
Is yours there? Um any objections?
No, um object.
Or one against?
Yeah, uh, thank you.
Item six, books sale proposal by the dogs trust with consideration of resolution.
Yeah.
Um we have been approached by um a, one of the dogs trust who has said that the dogs trust are interested in running book sales. And that by that it would mean that any process proceeds would go to the dogs trust, I imagine. And so this um person who approached us just wondered if the council was willing to consider that. Um the only trouble is that they don't have any storage, so it's something that obviously if you did want them to run it for on behalf of the town council, then um that is to be taken into consideration.
Yes, we do.
As I responded in the email, basically, I'm not against the charities doing such a thing, but then we shouldn't, we have to then offer it to other charities in, in other years, but the problem is then we're not raising money for the town.
Anybody else? Yes, please.
I, I have no objections, I think if they're prepared to do it, they'll obviously cover us and, you know, take that pressure off from uh from ourselves, and I think one of the first that our purpose intended, they obviously community led, so I'm very happy for it to happen. Of course, if in future years um the offer is made, I think it should be openly so that any community group, organisation or charity can come forward and to do it, and if they don't, then obviously um we can play that up, but I'm sort of, do you want to sort of foot my uh revised one that obviously it's got just car parks that they have to like well, so we listen to that. So uh I can, we believe as well, I can say, yeah.
Yes, a little bit.
I've been to the books out here and bought many books, and obviously many books go out the door. Will the dogs trust will then be putting new books in or will they just be taking books out? Because if obviously the volunteers have run it now, collect the books, is it still the volunteers collect the books, but just the dogs trust in this case, or any other organisation will just uh take the benefit?
That's my concern, I'll be honest.
Can I respond?
Sorry, yes. It's just from the dogs trust, no?
Hi, I'm Jackie Sparks, I'm the manager of the dogs trust shop under my manager's head. We would absolutely be able to stock you up with books. On average, we probably move on between three and five hundred books a week. We've been supplying Breckland, uh Weyland Prison for the last few months, we're topping them up with as many books as we can, these are books that we can't sell. But on a weekly basis, we can't turn over the amount of books that we get donated, but we do not have storage. We would be able to run the store, we would be able to manpower it. I have over forty years' experience in event marketing and event management in this country and others, no problem whatsoever in organising it.
Okay, thank you. Castle Taylor.
Have we resolved the issues of storage ourselves? Because obviously you mentioned they cannot store the books. Have we overcome that? Because we was actually going to cull all of these books and start again because we don't have any storage just. We have got an arrangement, the RSCA, they are supposed to make the rules, they're taking one lot and they are due to come back, so they will be taken from the cemetery in a priority, I am told. Um and therefore it then remains to see what we're going to do with the um the new books. Um the only place we could think of was perhaps your dog's suggestion, uh that sort of in, in the, just at the bottom of the stairs, but all sorts of. I know, if, yeah, yeah. At the other, the other one, to um use one of our containers and um in the um cemetery or in the compound where we could scale things back there, and then we could put books in all that, they are a little bit more tight, and then I've got something out back there that would be a little bit flimsy, yeah.
Yes, a little bit.
Um when this was discussed last time, a member of the public suggested that there are many, many businesses here with storage facilities, and we were going, or Sharon was asked, could we contact various businesses to see if they would be willing to store the books?
Yeah.
And if we're now going to have even more books, therefore more storage, more sale value etcetera, um can that take place? Can that question be asked that? Okay, no, I just, but I didn't want it to pass again because it was suggested, it was a great suggestion.
Can I have a quick suggestion, please? Somebody asked.
Sorry.
It's just a quick suggestion.
Sorry, who's, who's person, it's, it's quickly.
We suspend standing orders then, so.
Yeah, okay.
It's just, someone asked about the old library, who owns that, and could we not approach them?
We've already been to that before, we've been, that's moving on, please.
Sorry.
So what's the verdict, yeah?
I'm happy for the ghosts, for the dogs trust to take their turn and offer it round. I'm office host then.
Okay, always a favour?
Thank you.
Right, moving on to item seven, to consider all members of the committee vacancies. Castle middle rock.
Um for forty-five years I worked in planning, design and building industry. For the last thirty-five years I worked for Taylor Wimby, building even some of the houses here. On that basis, I would like to put myself forward for the Planning and Highways Committee and the Open Spaces Committee.
Daniel, is that everyone's in favour of that? Thank you.
Anybody else?
Yeah. Uh I too would like to go on Open Spaces and Planning Highways Committee.
Anyone's in favour?
David proposed himself.
Yeah.
And he's seconded at the time, and everyone is in favour, yeah.
Anybody else? What, what vacancies we got right?
Uh we've got vacancy on Standing Orders Committee and we've got the RGPM.
Vacancies on what?
Uh Stand Orders Committee. We call it storage.
I'd like to go with the General Purposes and Finance Committee. Second. All in favour?
Yeah, you can vote yourself.
So we've got all the last four.
You don't have to fill the standing orders if you don't want.
At least, you've got five.
We've got Councillor Taylor, Councillor Dalton, Councillor Westie, Councillor Virch, Councillor D'Souza.
So we've got the five.
Yeah, um at least five, yeah, to include Mayor Deputy Mayor, yeah, so that, that one.
Right. Can I also go on Stand Orders? Please?
All in favour? Okay, thank you. All right, moving on to item eight, Financial Matters, authorised payments. Right, item one to authorised payments, any comments?
Can I just make a statement just before we authorize, please? Um I have here two copies of the payments accounts for June that I've taken off the website. Um and they're both different. So I don't understand why I've got two completely different set of accounts for the same account. That's the payments account, it's for June this year. One is, um that's, this is the latest one, it was actually on the website, this was last week. And this is the one that I got from before that, um of which there's quite a considerable difference here in, in the amount spent, including, um that one doesn't show the um Breckland Council project manager, eighteen grand, neither does it, it just shows the um, the, the um. So how, how have I managed to get hold of two different sets of accounts?
It's just the payment schedule and I'm just going to do it for something.
Yeah.
So it's one of these, which is eighteen, zero, which is, you know.
Um it could be that I just added a list of the type that isn't the basement.
Let me see, will you write this one down? No, no, just. It's said this one doesn't include the two things. Well, this is the other day, yeah. The, the, the moment here.
Good man proposed to.
I have a question as well, please. Um I just want to clarify, there was two payments made to SF Services, was that last month? Could we, I know I asked you Sharon at the time, but you didn't know what that was, have you managed to get some clarity?
Um so long as they don't uh overlap each other, then I should imagine that was presented to us and we were happy to pay it because.
That's a two invoice that have been.
Not, it doesn't have to be exactly monthly, so long as the payments tally up to the time she's, and as I say, it's never, yeah, that should be fine. Uh when, when a contractor presents an invoice to us, depending on the payment terms, obviously we pay according to the payment terms. So, but I will take a look at that, obviously I have an invoice last week, maybe a bit around.
I suppose it could be monthly, but it was randomly, there was two payments last month.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, a little bit.
Um first I'll apologise for not finding the papers, financial papers, which I have now found, or many pages them. Um I have one first question is, who sets the budget in these? Okay, because two items, one, two hundred percent overspend so far, fine, but six hundred and seventy-five percent?
That, if you actually look at the end item, there was a budget for this year, three thousand five hundred.
Yep.
And I actually knew that you were going to ask for that, so I have actually got the printouts for that. And what it is, is it's the rescue, when we started to work on the town hall and all the dis, you know, the disability amendments, everything, doing kitchen. Um we, we had a general reserve of about six hundred odd thousand, six hundred and eighty-one thousand, I think. And that is an unacceptable amount of general reserves, so last year I applied to the council to via um monies towards the um repaving of back the town hall and um the Roma Building. And also, uh I think it was forty thousand for the um town hall refurbishment. So although you've got a figure there of expenditure of twenty-three thousand.
Yep, against three thousand, yeah, that's, you know, so.
That means that.
Not quite much less, but I just.
No, that's okay. What it is is, um I've printed out for you, uh the, for instance, um the largest expense on that was the the automated door at the front, which was about four thousand six hundred and sixty-four. The re, the fitting of the kitchen, four thousand eight hundred, new flooring in the town hall, four thousand three hundred and nine, and then some smaller items like um replacement fridge for the kitchen, curtains for the chamber, a call-out for the PA system, so that comes to twenty-three, six, four, seven.
Yeah.
Um but what it is is, when you look at the income and expenditure, if you look at the very right hand entry, that actually says transfer from EMR reserves, so Anne has actually transferred that amount from the forty thousand that was valued. Um so that that would cover the, what, what looks like an overspend, but it's actually money taken from the general reserves. And that is the figure that she took for the town hall project reserve, item three, 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 and that now leaves us ten thousand six hundred and thirty-four for any other expenditure.
It's just, when you present, you get presented a set, set of figures.
Yeah.
Then I'm going to have a look at them.
Of course.
The only other question I had is, at the end of all these figures, you have cash books that go from one to nine, except three and four, and is it, is, is that an oversight, is that just, my printer didn't work, or?
Uh I don't know, we have to look into that.
Okay.
If you can, if you can give me questions before the meeting, I can have that ready for you. Um but I, I also can't give you an answer right now.
No, that's fine, I just, I had enough trouble trying to find the paper.
So what was missing, three, four?
Three and four out of one, well, it starts with one, finishes at nine, but three and four aren't there.
Okay, yeah. It could be something.
Yeah, that's fine.
So uh can I just ask why the uh payments for, or the accounts for July, uh as of this morning, were still not on the website?
Accounts for July?
Yeah, the payments, the uh income, etcetera, etcetera, direct debits, all those three were not on the, on the website this morning.
Well, they're not on the website, they're.
Well, the June one is. Everything up to June is there, it's just July that's missing. On the finance page.
Oh, okay, again, I would have to look into that. We're only now just into mid-all, is that?
Yeah, but normally they're there for the, the, the meeting that would have held, had been held last month.
But isn't that, um the finance documents, are those that Anthony was mentioning, Councillor Mitchell was mentioning, the finance papers?
Yeah, no, it's totally separate, two separate things, I'm talking about what's actually shown on the council webpage under the finance. And there's normally three documents.
We are a little bit short-staffed at the moment, we are. I don't know really well that spelling, but um we are short-staffed and um one of our staff members has gone down full-time to three days a week, and um we're recruiting for receptionists at the moment, so I'm hoping that things will get a little bit better. But we are starting to fall behind on things, so if that hasn't been done, I do apologise.
Thank you. No proposal, also as a favour, please. Yes, the Dalton, second there, Councillor Taylor, Dalton. Always a favour?
One, two, three, four, who's the next, James, please, I'm sorry, are you not voting?
No.
So if I am staying then?
Um I just wanted to clarify to some of the tenants, so now I'm not going to, um so I'm not going to pass.
Okay, I say you do.
You answered my question, so I'll vote with.
Yeah, okay, so that's six, yeah, majority six, so it's carried.
Item two to agree direct debit, any comments? No proposal? Yes, the Taylor, yes, Dalton, second, always a favour?
So we've got one, two, three, four, seven, eight, yeah. Okay, are you two?
I'm staying.
Two extensions?
I'm staying, yeah.
Item three to receive income, acceptance and approval. Any comments?
Um the kindness, no, the um chambers cafe, the bank balance is zero, um the statement, and obviously on, there's lots of ex, um expenditure and income, but I don't understand why the the bank statement's zero.
The bank statement?
Yeah, or the balance, bank balance naught.
Um for that, um.
Because the balance shows a lot of expenditure and obviously some income, but then balance is naught.
I think it must be in a different category then, but we've got, um on the income and expenditure, we have lots of the income, so I'm just assuming that that has had to be recorded in section. Let's just always check it while.
Not if we can get back to you.
Okay.
Any comments, no proposal? Yes, Dalton, Councillor Taylor, second, always in favour, please?
John, three extensions?
Item four, petty cash for information, only any comments?
Just a quick, just a quick question then. I, I find on the, on these accounts that I look at, which are the ones obviously up posted on the workplace, it says the payments have been made into petty cash, but how much is the petty cash?
Uh our balance that we should have is four hundred when we refresh it, so our, our maximum balance that we should then um you know, make sure that we have is close to four hundred.
So we're making that up to the four hundred?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Item five, income and expenditure for July twenty twenty-five, information, any comments? No? Item six, to ratify the decision to pay for polling cars at the upcoming election on November September, consideration resolution, yes, please.
I propose, second.
Okay, always a favour?
Okay, words in favour?
Yeah, the unanimous?
Yeah. Item seven to agree the twenty twenty five bank reconciliation. Any comments on that? Let's see, no proposal, please? Yes, the Taylor, second, that's the way, words in favour?
Um, majority, um, are you abstaining? Are you?
No, I'm not.
You're voting?
I'm opposed to it, yeah.
Thank you, yeah.
Moving on to item nine grant requests for the aid for the fund for fiscal committee consideration resolution. See Mr Perkins lurking in the background there?
Yeah, we, I mean, we had the application and we also now, although hopefully people have seen our emails, we have the copyback statements going back a whole year. So they have provided all the information.
Either, okay. Cancer Taylor, second, words in favour?
Yeah, unanimous?
Thank you. And then item B, the Christmas lights commencing the consideration resolution, any comments?
I think everybody loves it, so. The president, proposal.
Thank you.
Words in favour?
Uh, majority, yeah, any extensions? Thank you.
All right, item ten, councillors' reports. Any takers?
No, no report?
No, just.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that councillor, or myself councillor, animal councillor Adams, held at the, um, Carlos Cafe, a couple of weeks back. Um, lovely.
Excellent, thank you. Item eleven, the clerk's report.
Okay, um. Just to say, people who are in the Lomond Road area would notice that the play area has been refurbished with, um, most of the items being left. So that's been completed, the reason why fencing is still around it is because we just need to, um, I have looked around it, just walking around, but I need to get in there and with the grants, we just so that we can look over and make sure it's okay. And then we can give the company, um, our verdict, and once that's done, um, I'm just wondering whether we were going to do an opening ceremony on it? Or like, what, what's the usual thing, because I haven't really been, or do you just want us to open it? Yeah, just open it? Yeah, okay. Um, yeah, so once I let the council know, hopefully I'll do that soon as possible and then we can get that. I know the kids are just sort of chomping at the bit to sort of get on here, so that's good. Um, public toilets, um, the new door on the left hand side will be put, um, or installed on, recommencing the eighteenth of August. Um, and the electricians, their choice to get that connected as soon as possible, so since that's on, they say that they could come and get it connected, so that will uh, now be available and then I can get the cubicles sent back. I have inquired with the GP Health Committee whether they do want us to keep the portaloos, but I do think that they're, they are reused, aren't they? Um, that's not really ideal to sort of have them hanging around, really, they're just subject to vandalism, they're also, people are expecting them.
Well, I'd rather it's all right, can you tell me what?
Well, the radar actually won't work anymore and one of them never did, um, it didn't even have any metalism, kind of keyhole, so, so we discovered. Um, so because anyone can, as long as you pay twenty, anyone can access it, it will be available twenty four seven. As opposed to before, it was closed at six o'clock and no one could use it, so it's, it's more than a month, I guess. Um, also, um, we're now looking at doing the roadway in the cemetery, just to make improvements, to make it a bit more accessible, with wheelchairs and scooters, um, and also getting, um, we will be getting roads for the road creation platform, uh, um, open space area that the council is going to be taking on imminently. Uh, we'll also be taking on Jubilee Wood imminently as well, I've had a communication from the solicitor and they are just about ready to, um, get, uh, the council's asylum over to us, so that will be presented to you, um, at the next opportunity, probably the first of September, I'm hoping. Um, also, just to let people know, I know that, um, the supporting standing orders committee are going to be putting the agenda out this week. Um, so we will be taking very close with the financial regulations and standing orders. Um, also, just to say that, um, if anybody has any queries about anything to do with finances or anything else that the council is, um, currently, uh, projects or anything, they have any questions, please just give me a phone, um, it's much more preferable, because once this information is out there and people are making assumptions, like for instance, the twenty three thousand that was just mentioned, um, people are thinking that, um, there's mismanagement coming on, but there's usually a good answer. If obviously we have done something, um, or we haven't looked into something as carefully as we should, we're always willing to improve and I'm also willing to look at it and make improvements, so please do communicate with me, um, and if you do think there's something untoward, just contact me and we can look into it and we can make sure it's right, or I might have the answers for it. Um, also, it's a bit of a shame that there's still, um, lots of, um, very negative comments on Facebook, which is very disheartening. We were hoping that that would stop, um, many more councillors have been subject to that now and, um, none of it is acceptable. So I would just like to make a statement that do you think it's very unacceptable? So please, if, if anybody is doing that, um, it's our town's reputation that's at stake, so.
Thank you. Moving on to item.
Can I just comment on something?
Sure.
The toilets, um, when the new doors are up, that's going to be cash and card, is what you said?
At the moment it's only card.
Yeah, but that's the right hand one, but the left hand one.
No, we won't be having cash and card, but because we've got issues with the company, for now, we're just gonna have to put card on it and then worry about the cash afterwards. Because the company refuses to put the cash box on, so that's.
That's gonna be a disadvantage for our queue table, isn't it?
Yes, I understand, yeah. But we'll, we'll have a look at that on GPNS as well, so we'll have a, have a fuller discussion on that.
And the cameras are working?
Cameras are working, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, moving on to item twelve. Requests for twenty twenty six events, summer carnival, banan poultry, family fun day, et cetera, for consideration resolution.
Um, yeah, the requests are for summer carnival, they're asked for twenty ninth of June to the sixth of July. Um, and also banan poultry are asking for a choice of two days, eighteenth of July or the eighth of August, so. Um, they've all asked very early, which is really good, because I'm gonna start off the calendar for next year, so I will, I will start complying that, but I didn't know whether councillors, whether if you could just, if there's an approval for now, I'm not aware of anything at all.
Probably doesn't think flash is, man, that.
I don't think that will, because she's the first Saturday in August, so it shouldn't clash with.
First Saturday in August?
Yeah, you're, you're.
That will pride.
Yeah, yeah.
That will pride is first Saturday in August.
Yeah. So, can you, is there?
Yeah, okay. Secondly, please, cancer Alan, words in favour?
Yeah.
Unanimous?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Sharon?
Yeah.
And Paul Nibon, I note that they've put forward two potential votes and they could just confirm which of those.
Yes, of course, yes, yes, we're, we're okay with that.
Item thirteen, Breckland car park proposal, any?
Nothing, we didn't report anything in the planning and hardware, so nothing to report here, I know, no further news.
Item fourteen, consideration for safer street wardens in Attleborough.
Um, with that one, um, I have circulated the summary consultation and I did try to get an officer here. Um, but the intention was that, um, uh, the officer, Craig Fowler, he was planning to come to Attleborough, he wants to hear a bit more closely with all the business owners. So he's gonna come to the high street businesses, so they aren't sending anyone here tonight, um, so I was just gonna ask if we could defer that to the first of September and put it onto the agenda there? If that's what you're telling me, um, they would want the opportunity, they also want the opportunity to look at our summary results as well. And then he will definitely, he's already put it in his diary, he will come to the meeting on the first of September and answer any questions that anyone of our local council has had.
Okay, thank you. Can I just, uh, no, can, can I just make a point here? On the, um, again on the council website, um, if you look at the first page of that.
Yeah.
It says there are sixty five violent sexual offences, thirteen criminal damage and arson, twelve antisocial behaviour and twenty nine other crimes. That's on the first page. If you then go into the page and bring up actually Attleborough. It then drops, funny enough, this is for May this year, by the way, it then drops to thirteen violence and sexual offences in Attleborough. Two criminal damage, one possession of a weapon, six antisocial behaviour, four all other crimes. So a total of twenty six crimes were committed in Attleborough, with a further eleven being committed in Bestor. All I'm saying here is that I think we need to look at the figures, not just look at the first page of that document, of that particular thing, because it is very misleading. It's nowhere near as bad as that, that page is, is saying.
Yeah, because I'm engaging the wider outer area or the actual town, so, that's that.
Yeah, okay.
But the question I was gonna ask is, um, have Breckland actually secured any further street warden funding yet? Because I know that round five had run out. Has it actually been secured?
Um, I believe so, um, also, um, the reason why I put it on the agenda, but I think they have, yeah, there is, there is funding available.
Because last, last.
Uh, they know that we're going for it, so we're gonna, yeah, that we're gonna have to ask, if council approves the ten thousand, then they're gonna have to put the money towards it. They must have money to put.
Well, I mean, that's the thing, because my only concern is, is that, um, if it's, the, the total cost is gonna work out something like thirty eight thousand.
Yeah.
In total, once you've paid all the things like that, which, when you work it all through, for what you get, if it's costing us ten thousand, in, in that sense, it's good value for money if we feel it's necessary. But my concern is, if the other funding streams don't actually arrive, that we then get left with a thirty eight thousand pound debt.
I don't, I don't think that, I, I know that that was.
Well, with Breckland being dissolved in a few years.
Yeah.
If Breckland had taken on the rest of the financial burden, what happens when Breckland disappears?
I would imagine the funding, and I think councillor Taylor might be able to answer this, funding is probably only not going to be supported. Okay, uh, well, I would imagine it is, it's gonna be, it will only be for so many years anyway, they would, they would not, uh, ask anyone for, they would not pledge money like that, definitely, so there, there will be a time, I can hold out for you, and that's one of the questions we could ask the officer when the council, the first of September. I was gonna say, I was just gonna say, sorry, um, I think that, um, we do need a decision by the end of September, because the, uh, the also contributor, it's not just Breckland, it's also his prime mission now. So they want us to let them know what the decision is by the end of September, which would be quite timely, we're gonna meet on the first of September.
My final question, sorry, is, has it been rolled out in Deir as well? Because you keep hearing all the shoplifting, everything's going on in Deir. Do they have street?
Well, you can say that it hasn't, because Deir and Town Council voted now, we see, against it.
Yeah, that's your answer.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, moving on. Anyone else want to add on that?
Well, is that public participation?
Yeah, item fifteen, public participation.
I just want to say, I know I'm inexperienced, I need to read up on my policies, I've got the standard orders in front of me, I just want to clarify. Obviously it's split, it does say members of the public can make representation at two public participation. And then underneath it says, an entitled to give evidence and attend in respect of business agendas, but it's obviously quite grave, you're saying that they can only speak about the gender items, because then how would the public be able to ever speak about any issues? Because that's not on the agenda. So could you get some clarity on that, please?
But don't forget, we're looking at standing orders next week.
Because I just obviously.
For that clarity where.
In my time of serving councillor, we've always had the public talk about anything in the.
Yeah.
Participation, so now just to say they can't do that, there can be a bit of clarity on that, thank you.
Any takers for public participation, please? Yes, lovely.
Um, I'm big concerned that you're authorising the payments when there's a huge query being raised by councillor Adams. So I don't really see how you can authorise payments like that.
I understand.
Yeah, that's basically how it can be authorised, I'm sorry.
I object.
Um, okay, um, but are you querying June payments, the one you?
Uh, there are payments, but those, that thirty thousand pounds.
But you, you're.
That was in June, but there are problems with July's pension plan.
You're, you're, you're being asked. Yeah, you're being asked to do the July payments, so is there a query on the July payment?
Yes, there is.
How?
Yeah, that's what I said to you, the, the July payments, each of the three, the payments, the standing or other direct debits and the income, I have found discrepancies on all three of them in July. I'll, I'll send you the details.
You really have June?
Yeah, that, that was June, that's what I just said to you, that was June I was querying the thirty thousand. I also said to you that there are problems with the July accounts and we shouldn't be, be, uh, agreeing them tonight.
I did, I didn't, sorry, I missed that when you said that, okay, I don't mind. What details did you give us on July?
Uh, off the top of my head, I can't tell you, but I will actually email you tomorrow and tell you, you know.
I need the information, if you're gonna query it, I do need specific information so that everyone is aware of what you're actually, because if it's not the same, it's just, if you don't tell me what it is, you can't answer it, they're just thinking, so that's why I do ask, if people can give me information at all meeting, I can have, if you want to announce it in the meeting or whatever, that there's a problem, but if you give me advance warning, I can get the answer for you. Because I'm very occupied that you're asking questions, I can't answer here, so I have to go back and answer them, because I have a price quite huge.
Anyway, going back to what I said, I don't know how they can do it, probably.
Just because the payments I was querying was July.
Yeah. Anybody else? Yes, please.
Where can I find feasibility study with the splash pad and the preliminary costings?
They haven't been, uh, published yet, um, we're still in the, um, investigation stage. So that, I should imagine they'll be published in due course, but the officer who was looking into that, uh, hasn't actually finished, um, with getting the information sent for the project to be approved, and until they've done that, they can't actually, um, you know, we can't progress there until such a, we've got all the facts and figures together.
So why are you having this meeting behind closed doors? I'm certainly.
I did ask that question, and they would prefer to publicise it once they have got all the information, because you're just gonna see changes every time we put it up. There, there is no, um, there's no, um, sort of like furtive reason why we're not, um, doing it above the line. I was asked to put it below the line, because the officer would like to present it when they have got all the costings, and they're still even working on the location of the splash pad. And until that has been finalised and approved, can't really, um, you can't then get costings unless you know exactly where the, uh, splash is going to be, when pipe work is, how much that pipe work's gonna cost, so we're still working on that, it's, it's quite a big project, so. But apologies if you think that, then there's no other reason than that, that they would rather, and also, I suppose there is a tender, um, tendering out as well, which actually quite proud of the version sensitivity.
So is it gonna be good value for money? After your survey, where I see sixty nine people in Attleborough are gonna use it once a week?
Um, well, uh, uh, obviously the councillors will assess that when it gets presented to them initially, whether all the things are presented officially. Um, I can't, I can't say as well. Can you hear me?
Yeah. Yes, please.
So have we actually decided we're having a street wall in opposed to City TV? Has that been decided?
That we, we, uh, put them on the first of September agenda.
You said earlier, it's been decided already.
Yeah, you did actually.
You actually say it's been decided we're having a street.
You actually said we're going for it.
We're going for it, you actually said. We're going for it. You actually said...
No, they were going for the Brent car park, didn't they?
No.
No, no, all you did say about street warden, sorry.
Yes, I was just going to say...
If I said it's already been agreed, I was talking about the Breckland car park.
I think it was just a slow.
No, you said about...
Certainly, certainly, nothing has been...
But when I was talking, I was actually, in my mind, I was...
Well, your mind wasn't transmitting very well.
Fair comment.
Anybody else? This place is...
Yeah, just a general observation on respect. There's two councillors at the table who mostly just have their gaze, their gadgets, what they're called this evening, and not, not only just this evening, but a couple of other meetings and things as well. So I just wondered how much they're taking in, what the people are saying.
A hundred per cent because all my financial documents, my grant applications, everything on my electoral devices, but thank you for your concerns.
Very well.
From my, from my point of view, I'd rather use this than print all the documents.
And that's fine, I appreciate you...
My green credentials for the council are based in this.
Yeah, I appreciate you might need to refer to me for your gaze of rarely coming away from this range. I just wondered how much your interaction...
Point, right, point, right.
Thank you.
Thank you. This place.
I'm pleased to hear that public toilets are sort of up and running and I understand that there has been acts of vandalism and a curse, of course, of the taxpayer, that you need to ensure that this doesn't continue to happen. That's why you put the charge of 20 pence on. Sadly, by restricting entry to cardless, card payments, this does affect a lot of people, including those who do not use cars or those who are not contactless or do not have access to special keys or age as well. Is there any way that the council can help these people in accommodating to people's needs and disabilities and ages as well by accommodating to this? Like Wyndham, their free toilet use if you go in the car park. I understand that there's maintenance needed on the toilets, but why should Attleborough be the other way to other towns that we're expanding to, please? Could I ask some clarity on that, please?
I think the intention was cash, but...
Hopefully, hopefully eventually, but this is one of the issues that we're having with the factor. So at the moment, it is only card.
Well, still no answer. That's very upsetting for the green team and people of disabilities and ages as well, that they have to use card payments to go to the toilet under disabilities as well. And I think that's very upsetting for a lot of people.
Anybody else? This place.
I mean, carrying on from that, what about all the 10-year-olds, 14-year-old children in the town who want to go to the loo? They're not going to be carrying a cash card.
No, they're not old enough to either.
I will, I will...
We'll, we'll look into it. As I say, the original intention was to have cash as well. We've been let down by the... So we'll, we'll look at options.
I totally understand that you said that you're even going to put a cash option, but really, I understand you're trying to stop the vandalism of the toilet. There's cameras that are now, as Sharon said, is fully working now. But that I have no issue, but I still do not think it's fair for kids' pocket monies or if they're under disabilities of any ages, vulnerable adults or pregnant women to be paying to use the toilet. I'm sorry, but I disagree. And I'm speaking probably from others as well here. And I would like to hear some answers of resolutions of what's going to happen to go forward, especially if you're now going to get an electrician to wire a card payment on the door as well. That don't sort of seem viable. Because that's extra cost.
As I say, we'll be putting it on the GPNS committee, which is going to be taking place next Monday. And we will look at, obviously, I will inquire with the company about that. But I think a decision has been made to, for people to pay for those public toilets.
So then that's discriminating against people like homeless people and whatever, whatever the case, that they can't use the toilet, then you're going to have people weeing around town. And then that's going to be an offence as well.
I was just going to ask if it's been six months since the last resolution and what's going to the GPNS committee?
I was just going to put that on the GPNS to ask about whether we could have portos. Because although I'm going to send those ones back, they're not brilliant. But I was going to ask the council or the committee if we could have a permanent...
Paul, then you may as well get rid of the public toilets because no one would ever pay if there was a free porto.
Well, I can't really see any other way.
It's a pointless waste of taxpayers' money in both respects.
It would cost about 1,800 a year to have one.
And then you'd have two vacant toilets because no one would ever use them. So all the money you've just spent would be a waste of taxpayers'.
But the decision has been made by council to go that route. So the idea was to sort of like have toilets that are available 24/7. So I think I mentioned in that swing, swan's around the house.
Yes, please.
Yeah, just going back to what I said about the, um, counts being approved, what is your, what are you going to do about that? Are you going to sort of unapprove them or whatever words would be? Are you going to sort of...
Well, let's, let's check what the discrepancies are first and then...
He does say if they're not right, you can't really approve them.
No.
Well, I mean, we'll just have to see how it goes.
We'll just send an amendment round by email. Okay, I'll move on now then. Thank you very much. Item to the next agenda, item 16.
Just the usual car park payments and Saker Street wardens.
Yeah. If anybody else wants anything, I don't think I'm...
Probably be some standing order, standing orders to fully approve.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, moving on to item 17, then exclusion of the press of public for consideration resolution. Meetings we close to the press of the public is the next of the business to discuss, including confidential legal information and matters set to do as in, under the Public Bodies Act 1960. Have a proposal, please. Constable Allen, Constable second. Words in favour? Thank you. Thank you very much.